Good evening and welcome to the August 7th meeting of Troy City Council. I'm Marty Baker, President of Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of this meeting. We'll begin with the invocation by Mrs. Lynn Sne, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Please join me in prayer. Gracious God, we ask your blessings on our city, state, and nation, and especially on those who serve and protect us. Thank you for the opportunity to represent our community. When we are faced with divisive issues, remind us to listen with understanding when it is time to listen, and speak with charity when it is time to speak. May we be guided by the Spirit of community and justice. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Tremblay?
Here.
Mr. Heath?
Here.
Mr. Twilliger?
Here.
Mrs. Oda?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
Here.
Mr. Swazer?
Here.
Mrs. Sne?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Move to excuse Mr. Phillips.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mrs. Sne to excuse Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne? Yes. Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips is excused.
Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes of the July 17th meeting of Troy City Council.
Minutes of Council, July 17, 2017. Committee reports, Streets and Sidewalks Committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing resolution of necessity for the sidewalk portion of the North Market Street reconstruction project. Committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing an application to OPWC related to funds for Riverside Drive Phase II improvement project. Resolution number R 31 2017, application to OPWC for a roadway project was given first reading and adopted. Resolution number R 32 2017, resolution of necessity for sidewalks of North Market Street improvement project, first reading and adopted. There were no ordinances following various comments. Council adjourned 7:35 PM.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Move, we accept the minutes as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Twist to accept the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne? Yes. Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
We'll begin with the Finance Committee report this evening, and Chairman, Mr. Kendall.
Thank you, Madam President. We do have one report. The subject is modification to the CDBG loan, 1 to 3 East Main Street for Troy Community Works. On July 31st, this committee met to consider the recommendation from the Downtown Loan Committee that the CDBG loan to Troy Community Works regarding the building at 1 to 3 East Main Street be modified. A loan was made in 2015 and structured to be a forgivable loan based on specific criteria. Progress as required has been made on the building renovation. Additional grants have been approved. Modifying the loan at this time to be considered a grant rather than forgivable at the end of a five-year period may permit the work to proceed quicker, especially in meeting qualifications for conventional bank loans. Increasing the funds from the city would give TCW matching funds for additional grants for the project. The stipulation will continue that city funds are dispersed only on the basis of work accomplished. Having this project completed will be beneficial to the downtown area. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to modify the funding to Troy Community Works to be a grant rather than a forgivable loan, increase the funding from a total of $850,000 to $1 million, and release the mortgage as security is not required for a grant. Other terms and conditions of this initial 2015 funding will be unchanged. We support emergency legislation so that the mortgage can be released and the financing phase can be completed as soon as possible, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Swazer, Mr. Tremblay, and myself as Chair of the Finance Committee.
Are there any questions from Council? Mrs. Oda?
I was unable to be at the committee meeting, and the video has not been available yet so that I could watch it before tonight's meeting. So I just, I have a few questions. A forgivable loan, is, does that totally wipe out the loan that the city gives them?
Yes, it's not, it's not needed to be repaid. That's correct.
So basically, the city is paying close to $1 million for that building?
It would be a grant through the CDBG funds that we have in our revolving loans. It would be to Troy Community Works as a nonprofit. They would renovate this building, and then as they made revenue from that building, their charter requires them to reinvest it into the downtown and to the Troy community.
Do we have any idea how that would be reinvested?
With, in new properties and new projects?
Robin, in 2015, when we first approved that, it was a forgivable loan at that point, the 850. And then the, in order for them to be able to get other grants, they could not have that, and the reason we're changing it to a grant is that they could not have a forgivable loan that would be shown in their favor. If they had grants, it was a favorable outcome for them.
Basically, a forgivable loan, a fifth of that loan would be forgiven each of the five years that they progressed along. But by calling it a forgivable, by calling it a loan of any type restricted their ability to get convention, to go for conventional financing to supplement our loan because the banks consider that an obligation and a liability, whereas as a grant, it's seen as an asset.
So in the CDBG fund, we do have that money available to give as a grant?
Yes. And what came up at the meeting also is the fact that the government is starting to review those, and if, and if communities have too much money in those, they do have the option that they could go in and pull that money and send it to another community.
Right. It's actual federal money. It's not city tax money. And I remember that discussion.
Yeah.
Okay. Just had that question, wanted to clarify it. Thank you.
Anything further? Anyone else have any questions?
Move for suspension.
Thank you, Mr. Kendall. We're just in committee.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm ahead of myself.
But you can have it.
The Law-
Okay. I'll be ready in next-
The Law and Ordinance Committee is next with a report from Mr. John Swazer.
Yes, Madam President, we have one report. On August 3rd, this committee met to consider a request of the Pink Ribbon Girls that would require an agreement with nonwithstanding language associated with the use of the public square area and a concert on Proudy Plaza, including the sale, consumption of alcoholic beverages on October 6th, 2017. The committee recognizes that details of the agreement would be worked out between the Pink Ribbon Girls and city staff, and also notes that the event will be cost neutral to the city. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to authorize the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into an agreement with Pink Ribbon Girls related to an event on public property on October 6th, and that the legislation include the standard nonwithstanding legislation for such events. Based on the stated timeframe for the Pink Ribbon Girls to confirm the event, the committee supports emergency legislation, and this submitted by Mr. Phillips, Ms. Sne, and myself as Chair.
Are there any questions on this report? Mr. Twilliger?
Within the wordage of this, it talks about elements of the agreement will be worked out between the city and the applicants. What are the particular rules or guidelines that will be worked out and traditionally have been worked out before we would move on with it?
Those refer to the administrative details such as any supplemental security, you know, the time that they can get in to start setting up and tear down, placement of certain elements of, of what they want to do, the staging and when that would go up, the trailer and where that would be located, just those kind of details. They would be the same details, or at least very, very similar to other events that we've done. They're the typical details. There's nothing unique about this in terms of what we've done in the past and what we will be doing this, this season yet. It will mirror in many ways the arrangement, the agreement, and the details that we've worked out with the Torta Donut and the Rock the Bike event in the middle of September.
But there is, at this point, no restricted area for the consumption of alcohol by itself?
There is, for the terms of the temporary liquor permit, the venue needs to be fenced off, and so consumption and sales can only happen within that confined area. There will not be an area within the area, but that area will be confined to within the road closings.
And there's clear identification of age?
They will be checking IDs at the gates, if you will, and providing bracelets for those that are over 21, so they will be strictly regulating that.
Anything further?
Nope. That's fine.
Mrs. Oda, did you have a question?
I do. Patrick, does that basically explain the notwithstanding agreement? I want, it's a strange, I mean, we've heard that word before, but-
It's a legal word.
Right, right. It's legal, but the public won't necessarily know. Can you explain what a notwithstanding?
You know, perhaps Mr. Kerber can talk about that since it's more of a legal word than anything else.
Sure. There's generally like some, some items in our codified ordinances have certain prohibitions that if this event were to occur, you wouldn't be allowed to have that. For instance, like service animals and things like that being in the area, carrying certain weapons and things of that nature. What it does is, in fact, even having, like, within the permitted area, having the alcohol there and things like that, so to allow that, it suspends the enforcement of those rules during the actual event, and that's what the notwithstanding refers to.
And how many people are expected?
From other events that they've had, it'll be several thousand, they expect.
Okay. And that, just a general fundraiser?
Yeah.
Just a general fundraiser? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from Council members?
Just one further question. How do they distinguish between, I mean, are there, is there alcohol going to be in a certain type of cup, or how, how would the police distinguish between them having an open container on the streets and someone walking out of a bar with an open container?
I believe the temporary permit requires that it, it be dispensed in a, in a plastic I'm not sure what kind of identification there will be on the, on the cup itself, but it'll be no different than any other event that we've had in a downtown-
Well, quite a few of them we've had have been within beer garden type of thing.
Well, yes.
So the only ones that-
Downtown, that's correct, but in Treasure Island, for example, we don't do a beer garden, but it is dispensed in cups and they are identified.
Right. Okay.
Same, same thing.
And the event itself, where is the group based out of? Do you know?
I believe it's a Dayton area group.
Miami County, actually.
Miami County. Stranger.
Thank you. Our next report then is from the Personnel Committee and Chairman, Mr. Twilliger.
Thank you, Madam President. Our committee met on July 31st to consider information regarding requested wage ordinance amendments to reflect a restructuring of the staff of certain utility employees and to amend the hourly wages of the street foreman to be the same as other foreman positions with a similar scope and responsibilities and requirements. It is the recommendation of our committee as follows, that O 27 2016 be amended to reflect the restructuring of positions within the utility division, and that Ordinance 45 2015 be amended to establish the 2017 hourly wage for the position of street foreman at $36.24 per hour. We do this so that the salary adjustments will be in place, in effect, this is request for emergency, so that the salary amendments are placed into effect without delay and to coincide with the next pay period for our employees. We support emergency legislation. Respectfully submitted by Mr. Kendall, Mr. Twist, and myself as Chair.
Are there any questions from Council? Thank you, Mr. Twilliger. Our final committee report tonight is from the Streets and Sidewalks Committee and Mr. Phillips, the chairman's absence. Will you please provide that report, Mrs. Sne?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. We have one item tonight related to the appointment of the Assessment Equalization Board and setting a meeting of the board. Committee members Sne and Phillips met on August 3rd to consider appointments to the Assessment Equalization Board, or the AEB, and set the meeting date and time of such board. The board would hear appeals filed related to the estimated assessments for the sidewalk portion of the North Market Street Improvement Project Phase II. The AEB may only consider matters pursuant to the authority set forth in Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 727. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, that the Assessment Equalization Board meet on August 22nd, 2017, 6:30 PM at City Hall, and that the board members be Rena L. Gummerlock, William G. Rozell, and Roberta Z. Jacobs. Based on the date the AEB will be meeting, we support emergency legislation, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Heath, myself, and Mr. Phillips as Chair.
Are there any questions from Council? Mrs. Oda?
Patrick, does the board, does the Ohio Revised Code dictate how they respond to requests?
Yes.
So it's not just them making up decisions as they go? They have to follow the Ohio Revised Code? Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mrs. Sne. That completes the committee reports. At this time, does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to the agenda items this evening? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address. There is a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Kerber is our timekeeper. Seeing none, we'll move on to resolutions and ask Mrs. Knight to read Resolution R 33 2017.
Resolution number R 33 2017, resolution amending the loan to Troy Community Works for assistance from the Downtown Business Building Repair Revolving Loan Fund and declaring an emergency. This increases the amount to $1 million, which will now be a grant, and this is the first reading.
Are there any questions from Council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mrs. Sne to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Move to adopt. I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Heath to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R 34 2017.
Resolution number R 34 2017, resolution appointing Assessment Equalization Board and declaring an emergency. This appoints the members to be Renee Gummerlock, William Rozell, Roberta Jacobs, and they will meet on August 22, 2017, 6:30 PM, first reading.
Are there any questions from Council?
Madam President, the, people are notified of the meeting times, correct, by mail, by a mailer?
Certified.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Sne and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes. Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mrs. Oda to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Move on to ordinances and ask Mrs. Knight to please read Ordinance O 20 2017.
Ordinance number O 20 2017, ordinance authorizing the use of public areas for the Paint the Town Pink with PRG event, notwithstanding conflicting provisions of the Troy Codified Ordinances, and further approving the use of an area for the sale of beer subject to the issuance of proper permits by the State of Ohio and procurement of liquor liability insurance and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to enter into an agreement with Pink Ribbon Girls, Inc., therefore and declaring an emergency. This is for an event to be held October 6th, 2017, first reading.
Are there any further questions from Council on this topic?
Move, move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mrs. Sne to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath? Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
No.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Ordinance O 21 2017.
Ordinance number O 21 2017, ordinance amending ordinance number O 27 2016 fixing salaries and wages of certain employees of the City of Troy, Ohio and declaring emergency. This is regarding a reorganization of certain positions within the utilities area. This is the first reading.
Are there any questions from Council?
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Tremblay and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swazer to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Ordinance O 22 2017.
Ordinance number O 22 2017, ordinance amending ordinance number O 45 2015 fixing salaries and wages of certain employees of the City of Troy, Ohio and declaring an emergency. This is an adjustment to the salary for the position of street foreman, first reading.
Are there any comments from Council?
I'll move to suspend the rules on that.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Twilliger and seconded by Mr. Twist to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
That completes the business portion of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements?
No, there are not.
Mayor Bemish, do you have any comments this evening?
Well, thank you, Madam President. It's my responsibility and privilege to appoint members to the Board of Park Commissioners. Many of you may know that Mrs. Pierce has had a need to resign her position, but it has been filled, and she's even attended the first meeting of the Park Commission, and that is Susan Westfall will fill the unexpired term that goes through July of 18. Just wanted to make sure everybody's aware, if you look and see a new face on the Board of Park Commission, that's who it is, and that's what's, we're moving forward. The other things, I would just say, you know, the Troy Civic Band has got another concert coming up. They're a great professional group of people, local, and I think their next performance is called Dance, Dance, Dance. I don't know what that means, but it sounds like they want to keep lively feet, but they're going to be performing on August the 13th at Treasure Island Park. The park's been used quite a bit for different kind of programming across the board, different events and all ages involved. In fact, tomorrow is a Troy Miami County Public Library event with a, down Treasure Island Park, so the different groups are utilizing the amphitheater in particular. So just one, and I guess a long range, the Air Force Band of Flight that we've had is also coming, and they have been asked to play at Treasure Island Park as well. So that's down in August, towards the end of August, I think, 27th, if I'm not mistaken. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Titterington?
Just as part of the activation projects related to the Downtown Riverfront Project Initiative that's been ongoing, the, the next event for the possible Cherry Street Commons[1647.98]
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Schwizer to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Twilliger and seconded by Mr. Twist to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
No.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance 021, 2017.
Ordinance number 021, 2017, ordinance amending ordinance number 027, 2016, fixing salaries and wages of certain employees of the City of Troy, Ohio, and declaring emergency. This is regarding a reorganization of certain positions within the utilities area. This is the first reading.
Are there any questions from counsel?
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes. Thank you. I just want to remind everybody that it's already August and we've got the Festival of Nations coming up. It's Saturday, August 19th. It's going to start at 2:00 p.m. They're going to be out up on the levee. So I think we're having almost 20 different countries this year with lots of food, the music this year, and the entertainment is going to be pretty awesome. We've got the Tamboritsons. I'm sure I said that wrong. They're a pretty nationally recognized organization. This is their 80th year they've been in different countries, all over the place. So this is by far the biggest entertainment event that we've ever had at the festival, I do believe. So everybody get out and check that out this year. It's going to be good.
Move to the end again?
August 19th. That's a Saturday. Starts at 2:00 p.m. Out on the levee.
And Brock, you may want a feature country?
Feature country is Ukraine. Ukraine this year. Should be good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kendall?
Thank you, Madam President. I also have an announcement for something happening in our community, and this will be on Saturday, August 26th. It's Be the Match Walk, Run, and Bike. It's a second annual event, and this is for bloodborne cancers. It's to help find bone marrow transplant matches and also stem cell matches for those persons needing that. It is very near and dear to my heart because my daughter was saved by it. So we will be having a 1K and a 5K walk-run, and we have added bicycling this year, and there will be a 15-mile family ride, which will be on all bike paths around Troy and Miami County. And then for the road ventures, it'll be a 50-mile bike ride out into the countryside around here. So again, Saturday, August 26th, starts at 10:00 in the morning. Anybody needing any information, they can call me at 937-339-7110. So thank you.
Where's that at?
It's also down at...
Treasure Island.
Treasure Island, and everything will be taking place there at the amphitheater. So, all right, thank you.
Madam President?
Mr. Twilliger?
Just a comment about Mr. Kendall and this program is that he gave that announcement rather quickly and factually, but a lot of credit needs to be given to Tom, his family, and his support group because Troy is the smallest community in the United States that is hosting this activity. This normally goes to very, very large communities, and the success of that program is in no short order the responsibility and result of the Kendall family's dedication to it. So come on out and support it. Let people throughout the United States know Troy is the place to be.
Any further questions? Mrs. Oda?
Somebody brought to my attention the other day, the bottom of the, not the new water tower out by Myers, but the shorter one, the older one, is discolored around the bottom.
You mean under the ball? Under the ball?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I don't know, mold, and it just happens as they get older, and as they do their inspection, probably next year they'll look at that. If they haven't already inspected now, then they'll look at it this year as well.
Okay.
We have an annual inspection program with a company that comes in and looks at all of our towers.
Does it just get washed off, or does it have to be repainted?
Well, they'd have to inspect it to see. Typically, you can power wash those off. I don't think it's been too many years since that's been repainted, so I'd be surprised if it had to be repainted.
Doesn't affect the water supply?
No, not at all.
Thank you.
Any further questions from counsel? Or comments? Okay, are there any comments from city staff this evening? Anyone in the audience have any comments? Please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Kenneth Tebby at 1580 Cheshire Road, 9B. I'm here, counsel pretty much touched on some of my concerns this evening. One, President Baker, you touched on the success of the bikeway off of Water Street, and it's my understanding that there's going to be some quantitative data collected now, but as of previous, there is no data. It's all hearsay and what people have seen. And I've seen this downtown riverfront project, and they said that these bike lanes increase 850% traffic in other cities. I want to know, how does that correlate to our city? Because if we're going to see an increase of 850% or some other number, I want to see where that came from. Because it seems like these decisions are being based off of a nonprofit group that the city, I believe, has jurisdiction on making controls. Over, but over the last board meeting minutes, there's directions that this nonprofit group wants to take encompassing the closure of green space and other things. And I read that some members up here said that that's not needed for council approval. So I kind of wanted some clarification on how those two things work.
Mr. Titterington, would you like to...
I will. I'll try to glean your question out of your comments. With regards to the bike lane, the 850%, I'm not sure where you got that other than it's data that's been collected nationally.
Yeah.
I think the point there, though, is that in our case, we have no direct connection between the bike path, which is the single largest paved bike path section in the country, to our downtown. And so unless we want to spend millions of dollars in longer term and wait for longer term solutions, adding bike lanes, particularly on South Water Street, that bike lane was identified as the safest and quickest way that we could do that. We will be monitoring that with traffic counts. We have been watching to see where the cars are parking that used to park there. We've noticed a lot better utilization of the north side of Water Street, for example, and there are still spots available, except for court days, of course, which are always overwhelming. But when it comes to that kind of a decision, that is an administrative decision in the mayor's office, in my office, that does not require legislation. However, there are other aspects of the concept plan that you're referring to that are online that are recommendations that have been analyzed and identified as best practices in other communities that would serve to meet the goals, objectives, and the vision that the committee and the group has come up with.
Okay.
That does not mean that they're going to happen. There are several elements of those recommendations that would have to go to council. For example, well, not just the council, but for example, the park board would have to weigh in on any change of use in the levee green space. So the idea of a river district is just an idea. It's one that to be activated would require park board action, council action, formal bidding, requests for qualifications, and alternative designs. There'd be a lot of additional action that would need to be taken.
So I guess, in other words, is this plan through this nonprofit doesn't completely align with the city's comprehensive plan? But for it to do that, we have to get that approved from the members before us?
It does align with the comprehensive plan. If you look at the comprehensive plan, which I believe is online, that is our overall, you know, zoning, transportation, quality of life, parks and recreation, and various other aspects. That is our plan for the next five to 10 years. That is accepted and approved by the planning commission. That is not something that's formally approved by the council because it is a living plan that can be modified. Council looks at that when they're discussing specific projects and taking action on those projects. And, you know, there may be times when aspects of the comprehensive plan may need to be altered because there are new and innovative ideas that have come forward and council wishes to act on them. It doesn't happen routinely, but it could happen. But to say that the downtown riverfront initiative and the draft recommendations are in conflict with the comprehensive plan, that's not true.
Okay. I just want to make sure because if we spent money to them, I want to make sure it aligns with what council's trying to go for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Jack Reddy, 1150 Crestview Drive. I spoke at the last meeting regarding my concerns over the drug problem in the City of Troy. I addressed a letter to the mayor, and I'm not sure of all the titles. So I was looking for any response or any comments on my letter of July 22nd.
I can respond, and so I see Chief Simmons here as well. But we've probably been as proactive as any community in this whole region. And I think the chief, and certainly you heard from Mr. Kerber today, what Miami County is trying to do. I know this weekend, there's a Hope Over Heroin event at Mo Park in Pickwa. It's the second annual. It's faith-based. We in Troy and Miami County had the first. We have taken, you heard about the quick response team we offer, the House of Hope that we have here. Actually, Jack, we have probably had others from other communities look at us as the leaders in trying to deal with this. This isn't a local problem. This is a national problem that just happens to along the interstate here in this region, Dayton being the key focal point of a lot of the trafficking. But, Jack, I can assure you, there are a lot of the police, the fire, prosecutors, all of us have formed a coalition to deal with that issue. And I think, the only thing I can say is, I'm very proud to say, I think Miami County and Troy in particular has taken big steps and have become the leaders to other communities that they look at on how to deal with the situation. It's a tough situation, but I think you heard tonight what some of the things that we are doing, and we are doing behind the scenes. I know the police intervention, prevention, and education are the three, I think, components if we're going to make a dent. So I just wanted you to know, I feel that we are doing the best we can in a bad situation, but we are the forefront, on the forefront of other communities joining in. And like I said, Mo Park has the next Hope Over Heroin event, and that's taking place this weekend, and that followed ours that we did.
Okay, thank you. Please continue. And I...
But the shorter one, the older one, is discolored around the bottom.
You mean under the ball? Under the ball?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a, I don't know, mold and it just happens as they get older. And as they do their inspection, probably next year, they'll look at that. If they haven't already inspected now, then they'll look at it this year as well.
Okay.
We have an annual inspection program with a company that comes in and looks at all of our towers.
Does it just get washed off or does it have to be repainted?
Uh, well, I, well, they'd have to do, they'd have to inspect it to see. Typically, you can power wash those off. I don't think it's been too many years since that's been repainted, so I'd be surprised if it had to be repainted.
Doesn't affect the water supply?
No, not at all.
Thank you.
Any further questions from council? Or comments? Okay, are there any comments from city staff this evening? Anyone in the audience have any comments? Please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Kenneth Tebby at 1580 Cheshire Road, 9B. I'm here, council pretty much touched on some of my concerns this evening. One, President Baker, you touched on the success of the bike way off of Water Street. And it's my understanding that there's going to be some quantitative data collected now. But as of previous, there is no data, it's all hearsay and what people have seen. And I've seen this downtown Riverfront project and they said that these bike lanes increase 850% traffic in other cities. I want to know, how does that correlate to our city? Because if we're going to see an increase of 850% or some other number, I want to see where that came from. Because it seems like these decisions are being based off of a nonprofit group that the city, I believe, has jurisdiction on making controls. Over but over the last board meeting minutes, there's directions that this nonprofit groups wants to take encompassing the closure of green space and other things. And I read that some members up here said that that's not needed for council approval. So I kind of wanted some clarification on how those two things work.
Mr. Titterington, would you like to answer?
I will, I'll try to glean your question out of your comments. With regards to the bike lane, the 850%, I'm not sure where you got that other than it's data that's been collected nationally.
Yeah.
I think the point there, though, is, is that in our case, we have no direct connection between the bike path, which is the single largest paved bike path section in the country, to our downtown. And so unless we want to spend millions of dollars in longer term and wait for longer-term solutions, adding bike lanes, particularly on South Water Street, that bike lane was identified as the safest and quickest way that we could do that. We will be monitoring that with traffic counts. We have been watching to see where the cars are parking that used to park there. We've noticed a lot better utilization of the north side of Water Street, for example. And there are still spots available, except for court days, of course, which are always overwhelming. But when it comes to that kind of a decision, that is an administrative decision in the mayor's office, in my office, that does not require legislation. However, there are other aspects of the concept plan that you're referring to that are online that are recommendations that have been analyzed and identified as best practices in other communities that would serve to meet the goals, objectives, and the vision that the committee and the group has come up with.
Okay.
That does not mean that they're going to happen. There are several elements of those recommendations that would have to go to council. For example, well, not just the council, but for example, the park board would have to weigh in on any change of use in the levee green space. So the idea of a river district is just an idea. It's one that to be activated would require park board action, council action, formal bidding, requests for qualifications, and alternative designs. There'd be a lot of additional action that would need to be taken.
So, I guess, in other words, is this plan through this nonprofit doesn't completely align with the city's comprehensive plan? But for it to do that, we have to get that approved from the members before us?
It does align with the comprehensive plan. If you look at the comprehensive plan, which I believe is online, that is our overall, you know, zoning, transportation, quality of life, parks and recreation, and various other aspects. That is our plan for the next five to 10 years. That is, that is accepted and approved by the planning commission. That is not something that's formally approved by the council because it is a living plan that can be modified. Council looks at that when they're discussing specific projects and taking action on those projects. And, you know, there may be times when aspects of the comprehensive plan may need to be altered because there are new and innovative ideas that have come forward and council wishes to act on them. It doesn't happen routinely, but it could happen. But to say that the Downtown Riverfront Initiative and the draft recommendations do not, are in conflict with the comprehensive plan, that's not true.
Okay, I just want to make sure because if we spent money to them, I want to make sure it aligns with what council's trying to go for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Jack Reddy, 1150 Crestview Drive. I spoke at the last meeting regarding my concerns over the drug problem in the city of Troy. I addressed a letter to the mayor, and I'm not sure of all the titles. So I was looking for any response or any comments on my letter of July 22nd.
I can respond, and so I see Chief Simmons here as well. But we've probably been as proactive as any community in this whole region. And I think the chief, and certainly you heard from Mr. Kerber today, what Miami County is trying to do. I know this weekend, there's a Hope Over Heroin event at Mo Park in Pickwa. It's the second annual, it's faith-based. We in Troy and Miami County had the first. We have taken, you heard about the quick response team we offer, the Hope Over Heroin, House of Hope that we have here. Actually, Jack, we have probably had others from other communities look at us as the leaders in trying to deal with this. This isn't a local problem, this is a national problem. It just happens to, along the interstate, here in this region. Dayton being the key focal point of a lot of the trafficking. But Jack, I can assure you, there are a lot of the police, the fire, prosecutors, all of us have formed a coalition to deal with that issue. And I think, the only thing I can say is, I'm very proud to say, I think Miami County and Troy in particular has taken big steps and have become the leaders to other communities that they look at on how to deal with the situation. It's a tough situation, but I think you heard tonight what some of the things that we are doing. And we are doing behind the scenes. I know the police intervention, prevention, and education are the three, I think, components if we're going to make a dent. So I just wanted you to know, I feel that we are doing the best we can in a bad situation, but we are the forefront, on the forefront of other communities joining in. And like I said, Mo Park has the next Hope Over Heroin event, and that's taking place this weekend. And that followed ours, that we did.
Okay, thank you, but please continue. In my humble opinion, by putting the scumbags in jail, that fixes a lot of problems. My second comment is, I live in Florida in a retirement village. We're governed by a business manager and trustees. My compliments to you people, we're going to get out of here by eight o'clock. Our meetings last three and a half hours, which takes away from our nap time and watching ESPN.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Reddy. Are there any other comments?
My name is Kent Frauenberger, 320 West Franklin Street here in Troy. I am treasurer of Troy Community Works, and on behalf of our board of directors, I want to thank the council for your action tonight on the, our grant legislation. I'm confident and very hopeful that it's going to help us with this continued remodel of this Coleman Allen building on the square. So we appreciate your efforts tonight. I wanted to thank the mayor, Patrick, Jim Dando, Greg Harris, for their efforts in assisting Troy Community Works in this endeavor and lots of grant endeavors that we are pursuing. So again, my, our thanks, my thanks personally and then professionally as treasurer and representing the board of directors. So thank you.
You're welcome, and I want to express our thanks as well because I know a lot of you are volunteers doing that job. And you've done a really great job with buildings in the past, and we look forward to more of that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
A separate, private, or more personal note, a thank you to Robin Oda for her work on social media in keeping citizens of Troy informed. While she and I are on the opposite spectrum of the political arena, I appreciate her efforts and all that she does in keeping the community, her social media friends, informed. And I appreciate that, so thank you.
Anyone else in the audience have any comments this evening?
Mr. Connor, 1210 South Clay Street, Troy, Ohio. I haven't seen any of the streets being repaired yet. Has any streets been repaved or resurfaced?
Our annual program has not started yet. It'll start later this month?
Later this month?
Yes.
Okay, I was just wondering, I mean, I know you're making over $200,000 a year off the license tags.
Right.
So, you know, I mean...
That'll all be reinvested in 13 or 14 roads, I believe, this year?
Well, it'd be nice if maybe you could put it into the newspaper so that people could keep abreast of where you're going to be working and what's going to be done, instead of just...
We can give them an update.
Yeah, it would be, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
Anyone else in the audience have any comments this evening?
Good evening, my name's Mickey Hammer. I live at 1160 Red Maple Drive. And I was here, it's been about a year and a half ago, when the plan development that we live in was being, was operated by Judy Toome. She was petitioning the council to, not even petition, but wanted to change how the subdivision, excuse me, planned community was going to be operated. Because we moved into the, my wife and I and a couple of other people, people in the back of the room, to the community and had an expectation of what the homes would be like and how it would be operated. And she unilaterally decided to change that, given the fact that she is in charge of the management team that runs the planned development. So since that time, you know, we didn't have any real say in that, so we have to move on. But what's been happening since that time is anytime we have any type of rain, of any quantity, we get flooded out. The, it looks like the elevations that are put in for all the new homes that are going in now are not the same. They don't meet the same requirements, so the drainage is not being carried out right. The last rain we had about two weeks ago, big one, the back of my yard was completely flooded. I spent a lot of money on the landscaping in that yard. And I was very concerned that now it's just going to get wiped out. And that just doesn't seem right. And I didn't, who do I go to to get some justice out of that? I don't want it to continue to happen as the rest of the planned community gets developed. We're on phase four right now, and there's three more phases that come after that. So I just see bad things happening, not just my yard. The streets flood, the sewers are not big enough to handle the flow of water that's coming off of them. The houses that are being developed now, the drainage is supposed to go from the roofs, down to gutters, into the sewers. They're being left to go right wherever they go. And it's just creating a mess, a complete mess for us. And I just, you know, we've sent messages to people, my wife has sent messages to people, and nothing's getting done. We don't see anything getting done. So where do I go?
Mr. Titterington?
Sure. So immediately after the event that you were talking about a couple of weeks ago, it did come to our attention that that was happening. We immediately, staff immediately contacted developers, engineers. The engineers are reexamining the elevations that they have out there, the plans that they had put together, the engineering calculations. Believe they're still doing that because they want to do a thorough job. They're also analyzing the utilities in general to make sure that all the connections were made the correct way, that they were, that the pitch and some of the other aspects were done correctly, and that the lines are clear. So they're looking at all aspects of that. And it is, you know, we are in discussions with the developer. It is still a development that's under construction. City has not accepted that subdivision. And so we'll keep, we'll keep up a dialogue with the engineers and make sure that they resolve the issues.
But homes are still being built to the same specs that they were before, and I just see it continuing the way it is.
Well, now, there's a difference between the homes being built to a particular spec and the infrastructure on which the homes are being built. And it's the infrastructure, it's the elevations, it's any of the retention areas, and it's the stormwater in particular that we are discussing with the engineers so that any issues that are out there get resolved as quickly as possible. And any future building and impervious surface, hard surface, in other words, doesn't continue to impact that.
And I think we're saying the same thing, but we're going at it a different way. Because I continue to see the foundations being built, and from where I sit, they still are not to grade. They just don't seem right. So what happens after a foundation is built, it's not to grade, and they still are allowed to finish the house? That doesn't make any sense.
Well, again, you're talking about lots on which the buildings are built. We're talking about the common infrastructure, the roads, the green space, the tree lawns, the retention areas in the backyards and the side yards, wherever it is, and how that elevation and how that grade is set.
But isn't that based off where the foundation of the house starts?
It can be, and there are elements that kind of co-mingle, if you will. But we're really talking about all of the water and the load from that water and where it's going when it drains away from the property into the streets, into the gutters, into the storm sewers. That's what their engineers and us, we're...
On the side of my house, when that, we get that heavy rain, it backs up, the whole street is flooded. It goes over the curb, over the green space, across the sidewalk, and into my yard. So something is drastically wrong.
And that's because there's possibility that that water is not getting away quickly enough, and it's backing up, and so it's going into your yard. That's because...
Okay, so what's the solution?
That's what, we're talking to their engineers because the developer's responsible for making sure that that doesn't happen. And it's their engineers that need to look at their calculations, look at actually what was constructed and how it was constructed. And if there are modifications that need to be made, then they need to be made.
And in the meantime, more are being put in, more houses are being put in. So it's just going to compound the problem. Can it be a moratorium until we decide what is going to be the fix and get the fix in place?
I'm not sure legally if we can do that, but if it comes to a point where we're not satisfied and there's a legal way that we can do that, that may be something that we will consider. But at this point, you know, the engineers are still looking at it, and we're in contact with them frequently since we want to get it resolved quickly.
Can this be like an emergency situation, like all the other things on here are? And we can get something done right away?
Well, from a staff standpoint, it is a priority, so I guess you call that emergency.
Okay, thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Lori Jackson, 2322 Larkspur. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to take just a few moments of your time to discuss the same issue that was so eloquently discussed just a moment ago. We have a severe flooding problem in Meadows of Stonebridge. We have, I personally have contacted the engineering department about the concerns behind my property, that there is no place for the water to go into the pond, it's too low. I asked that the engineering department come out and assess. I get no follow-up. I did contact the city engineer after this massive storm. And to put it on a more personal level, if you lived in that community and you had an emergency, I have a four-by-four Sierra 2500, I barely got through Swan Drive. Do you think an emergency vehicle could have gotten through? This is a significant issue for the people that live in this community. I've heard a lot of talk about possible fixes. We get no communication from the city with findings, how things are going to be fixed. I'm not an engineer, but common sense tells me, when I'm told that water's supposed to be drained out to Wilson Road, that sits higher than where my property is, I'm trying to figure out how water's supposed to flow uphill. And all that water is still going to want to come down into the development. I put my faith in the city of Troy, from my retirement home. And I'm now asking you, as city council members, to look into this issue, ask the hard questions. Because, believe me, the homeowners, they are asking the hard questions. And I'm going to say it to you again, we're not getting good answers. Something needs to be found and a plan developed that is actually going to address the water issue before building is continued. My second issue that I also want to bring up, we also have a major intersection issue with 718, Washington, and Meadowbridge Way. There is a school there. I can only pray that someone is not killed there, especially a child, because that intersection is a death trap. I have almost been hit at least three times by people trying to pass going into town east on 718 because I can't see to turn. I would ask that the city also look into that issue, if nothing more, than a safety factor for the children that are trying to come from our development to the school. Because I don't want to have to go play nurse and scrape a kid off a 718. So I'm asking you, please, we have come to you and we're saying we have major problems. We're asking you to look into this and please, give us some information and some follow-up. I still have not received a return phone call of what was found from the assessment. I know the city has been out there looking at the sewer system, and we've heard a lot of things. I don't want to hear, I would really prefer that this information be communicated to everyone in the development so that everybody has the same information. I don't think that's too much to ask. Would that be possible, sir?
Like I said, we're, I mean, we're still looking into it, so we have no information to give you yet. Don't want to give you incomplete information. But certainly, at some point, I don't know if you've, I don't think you've got an HOA, Home Owners Association, yet. I'm not sure if she's set one up yet or not. But certainly, we can get that information out as soon as we have some reliable information and a fix that we're going to have their engineers work on. We will do that as soon as we can.
Yeah, because, please, I'm saying, we've invested in the community. We need help. That's why we're here tonight. So please help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Question, is that intersection in the city? That's a city township state issue, but I don't know.
We will look into that intersection, and if we have to coordinate something with the county, you know, we have a good relationship with them, so we'll work that out.
Mr. Titterington? They're on phase four now? And there's three more phases that they have to do? Is that correct? And they have to come back to us before they can have any more houses built?
Um, no, I don't, I don't think they do.
We have them approved all of them.
It's been approved, but... But we're going to, you know, we're looking at what's been built and how it's been built. And as part of that review, we are going to be looking at what additional building we'll have as an impact on that so that we can resolve the problem and not deal with it one symptom at a time. And that's why, you know, we've asked the engineer to go back and take a comprehensive look at it so that, you know, it gets fixed, and it gets fixed once, and it gets fixed correctly.
How many more houses are left to build in phase four? Do we have any idea?
No, I don't.
Seven lots are not sold out of the 22, so...
And they've started having construction on phase five. Like, and we're...
And Judy is the homeowners association?
She is right now.
Right.
Patrick, do we know, when did the flooding start? When were there issues that started?
I can't tell you offhand. We've had a couple of...
It goes way before they were built out there.
My backyard was a second pond a year ago. Because phase three was not back then.
And what phase are you in?
Two.
So there's been flooding since phase two?
We're in phase one.
Before that, it has been flooding.
It was before they started building.
But Patrick, to be clear, it is the developer's responsibility. The city has got involved to make sure that it's being done.
That's our, that is our belief.
Yeah.
You know, I don't want to say anything firm yet, one way or the other, we do want to get it resolved. We believe it is the developer's issue, one way or the other, and we are intervening on, you know, on our behalf, the community's behalf.
Our community's behalf.
Because there are standards they've got to comply with under the subdivision regs, and it is still a subdivision that is under construction and has not been accepted by the city.
Right. If there was an issue, we would put that back on the developer to get corrected.
If it is their issue, then we definitely will be, yes.
But it's not going to happen in the speed that's needed because we have to make sure we follow all the guidelines under those codes and regulations also.
Well, we do, and, but we also want the engineer, the engineer, their engineer knows this is a priority and this is a big issue. And, you know, so they're not stalling, they're not, we don't believe that they're dragging their feet. They're looking at the, really what the issue is and then how to fix it.
Okay. And Mr. Titterington, this would be in my ward, so please, any new information that comes up, pass that to me, and I can help get that out into the community. I've also moved into that area recently, so I'll get my snorkel ready, apparently. And we'll, we'll see if we can get that information out as soon as possible.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Connor, 1210 South Clay Street. On this same issue that they're talking about now, I've been coming up here for quite a few years. Some of you are new and haven't heard it. Others are old like me and they've heard it. But it seems like this is not a new issue with subdivisions and with water and the subdivision. And it seems like after they completed their projects, then Mr. Titterton...
they completed their projects, then Mr. Titterton takes the attitude that it's not our problem anymore. You've got to deal with the people that built it, the builders, and the, you know, and the city throws up their hand and says, "We're not responsible anymore. It's out of our hands." These people have fallen right into the same thing. It's been going on and on for a long time here in Troy, and I don't think you're making any progress in that issue. Thank you.
No, I'm not going to comment on that one. Thank you, ma'am, for the opportunity.
Any further comments from the audience?
First timer, my name is Doug Schroeder. I live at 2313 Larkspur Drive. Wasn't sure what to expect here this evening, but I can validate everything, all the comments that have been made thus far. I just wanted to go on record. In regard to our location, we just purchased this property, not knowing that there was the flooding issues that were occurring. And I speak for myself and my neighbors on both sides of me and down the street on Larkspur Drive, that our backyards will significantly flood when there's any significant rain whatsoever. Not knowing what to expect, I did bring a thumb drive with about a half a dozen pictures and about a 10-second video, if anybody would like to take a peek at something like that that happens when there's any significant rain. So I just wanted to go on record and support the comments that have already been made, and hoping that engineers and developers can do the responsible thing for our area. So thank you very much.
If you would like to leave that with Mrs. Knight, I'm sure city staff would be happy to look at it. If you would prefer not to, that's up to you, but you're welcome to leave it.
Is it possible to make a copy of it or something like that, and then I can get it back? That's great. My wife told me to bring it back.
She could put it on the record. Okay, sure. So come back tomorrow when you're... I'll give you my ID, so. I can deliver that if you want to give it to me, and I can drop it off. Whatever way.
We'll have to get a copy tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further comments? Thank you all for attending tonight's meeting. Have a safe and peace-filled week. Meeting